I call to order the July 24, 2018, meeting of the Oshkosh Council. Would you please take the role?
Crowsey.
Here.
Peck.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Muglerower.
Here.
Present seven.
Would you please all stand while Councilman Crowsey leads us in the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance?
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under the capa indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight we have two presentations on the agenda. Who will do the first one, Mr. Rowell?
It'll be me, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It is my pleasure to introduce our recognition of our 2017 Employee of the Year. And what do we do? We make her come up on stage and come out here, come out into a building on a very nice evening. I know most of you, if not all of you, know Jen McCallion. She's with our Parks Department. She's our, she takes care of a lot of our facilities and runs a lot of our special programs. And why did we wait till mid-year? Well, I'm glad we did because this is an employee recognition committee. The employees themselves select employees of the quarter. And then I can only choose from those who the employees have selected as employee of the quarter. So I had four quarters to choose from. But the employee committee was a little late and didn't get around to honoring Jen until last month for the fourth quarter employee of the quarter for the last quarter. And then when I got to look at all the candidates, Jen just stood out. Although we had some wonderful candidates, Jen had some good competition. Jen runs a lot of the programs. Tuesday night, the family Live at the Leech, that's a program Jen runs. Zuluween Boo. If you're a parent in Oshkosh and you have kids and you've gone to programs, Jen's probably been the one who's put those on. If you're a parent, you're looking for a good event, Jen, I think, puts the parent hat on and says, "What would I do to make this event good for my own family?" That's the can-do spirit that I think we all like to celebrate. So it's my honor to recognize Jen McCallion as our 2017 Employee of the Year.
Jen, now the grilling starts. Is there something going on at the Leech tonight that you might want to let the citizens know about? And actually, not tonight, but just about every Tuesday night?
Yeah, that's where I'm heading after this. So on Tuesday nights, we have our Live at the Leech concert series, which is a great family event. We have bands, and we have food trucks, bounce houses for the kids, we have yard games, face painting, just a great night, beautiful. The last three have been great. We've had a great start this year, you know, between 1,100 and 1,500 people on the Tuesdays. So it's a lot of fun. The kids have a blast just running around. We've had bubble events. Tonight, we have the American Black Belt Academy is doing a demonstration before the concert. So just a great place to bring a family down and enjoy the beautiful night at the Leech.
So then you wouldn't mind if at this time I said that, you know, the citizens who I know you're watching on TV, we appreciate you watching us on TV, turn the TV off, head down to the Leech and have some fun tonight? You can always watch this on the replay.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. We'd love it.
Congratulations, Jen. Thank you.
Did you say the event is free?
It is free. It is a free event sponsored by Verbic Credit Union, and the family portion is sponsored by WPS. So just great community partners and making it a really fun place for families to come. So, yeah. And I want to thank all you guys. It really means a lot. I know there's a lot of great people that work for the city of Oshkosh. So I've been lucky enough to work here for almost 20 years now. So, yeah. So, thank you.
Councilman Herman.
Thank you. Being the Parks Board rep to the council, Jen does a lot more than just the Leech and the special events down at the zoo. She's in charge of the water park, public water park. She's part of getting staff hired. She does all the financial reports, brings them back to the Parks Board. So, yeah, it's a three-quarter time position, I believe, but she works year-round on it. And it's pretty exciting because she keeps the Parks Board engaged with what, not only what she does with all the special events and the different things, but her reporting of the numbers, how many participants, all that is under her duties and responsibilities. So it makes it easy for the Parks Board to continue to support the park initiatives and the park projects, and employee like that is very valuable to the city of Oshkosh.
Yeah, and I just noticed as I look out here, they talk about the rose between two thorns.
They've heard it before, it's okay.
She has to get back to work, so, you know, she's got to keep it up. She's got to get over to Live at the Leech, though. And our next presentation, Mr. Mayor, is the mid-year report from the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation. They've dressed up for the event, so we're happy to see Jason and his staff here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rowell, Mayor and Council. Yes, there is AirVenture this week. So usually, we try to dress up a little bit when we come to present in front of you. And I'm not sure how we decided to determine tonight to be the night that we come before you, but I think we also did that last year as well. I think we always downplay or maybe underestimate the amount of time that we spend out there this week, which means we are kind of usually scrambling to get here on time, much less have our stuff together when it comes to presenting kind of our mid-year report. But nonetheless, I think it's definitely appropriate, given that a certain aspect of our efforts does revolve around what's happening out there at AirVenture this week. So I think it's appropriate certainly in that respect. A couple of things. One thing we have, I think, in your packet in our left report, I'm not going to go into those details because you have already seen it, it's in your possession. Audra's here to answer any questions, if you have any, as a conclusion of my part of this report. And one thing I will say that has been very exciting is that we have replenished the capital catalyst fund to assist high-growth startups in our community. And that has, obviously, this group has played a big part of that, but WDC has really liked the efforts that we've put in to that program in terms of helping a number of startup businesses in our community. And also, the remaining funds that, from Champco's organization, were also transferred to this program as well. So thank you very much to the city of Oshkosh and also Champco for supporting that program. And also, this might be kind of an odd time to mention this, but I usually always say I'm going to supply all announcements at the end of the presentation, and I forget to get to them. And that is Aero Innovate's Pitch and Mingle event is tomorrow night at the Alumni Center from 5:00 to 8:00. I just bring that up. It brought to my attention that some of the folks from the city, and actually, also some of the folks from our own team, were not included on the invite list oversight this year by the university. So I just want to let you know that that is taking place. Audra was, I think, the first full-time director of Aero Innovate a couple of years ago. And that's been a good program for us from a business development standpoint, because every year, there's a couple of entrepreneurs, four to five entrepreneurs around the country that come here that have new technologies or new innovations to introduce to the aviation industry. And we like to try to bring some of those folks here and maybe stay here permanently. And I talked to two or three of them today that genuinely are interested in Oshkosh after they graduate the program here at the end of the week. So that's something to look forward to. So here are those folks tomorrow night. Real quick, as we go into the presentation here, when we started our original strategic plan three, three-and-a-half years ago, a lot of it was built on need to create 1,000 jobs in three years. And when I got here and looked at the whole landscape of our area, I realized that that was an unachievable goal, an impractical goal, in large part because we hadn't even grown our population since the census by 1,000 people. In addition to that, we didn't have necessarily the people to fill the positions that our companies were creating when they were hiring people. So that has only intensified recently because the unemployment rate has slashed in half. It was 4% to 5% when I started, now it's 2% to 3%. And so when we look at our program of work, it's really got to be built on not traveling around the world, not going to Vegas, not going to Hawaii, which are wonderful places to go, try to find companies to bring to Oshkosh. It's really taking care of the companies we have here and building an entrepreneurial ecosystem in our own backyard. So to that end, our strategic plan is really built around organic growth in our community. The other aspect that it does is it changes the metrics a little bit, and it looks at, is the work that we're doing and is the work that our community is doing, is that moving the needle economically compared to the other metros across the state? So one of the things we did in our original strategic plan was we tracked a lot of things. We had a lot of metrics. But you can track a lot of things, and you can have a lot of activity, but if your efforts and your outcomes aren't matching what everybody else is doing in your peer group, then you need to reassess your strategy. So when I say that, we track a lot of different things, and I don't think that we are solely responsible for moving the needle on all these items. This is a community-wide effort, but it's very important that somebody has the eye on the ball when it comes to looking at all these factors. So these things are updated annually. If you read our economic report that was, came out the first quarter of this year, you'll see that a lot of this stuff was in there. So we will update this at the end of 2018. But just real quick, things that we think are important to track. One is our labor force participation rate. If you have a 2% to 3% unemployment rate, you want as many people in your labor force working as possible. Oshkosh has a 68.6% labor force participation rate, so people who are able, workforce-age population, basically, 68% of those individuals are working. That stands eighth across all 12 metro areas in the state and also fourth when you look at the I-41 corridor. So we are last when it comes to the percentage of people in our community working as a percentage of our entire community. There could be a lot of reasons for that. One of the things I think that we're spending some time looking at is what are graduating seniors doing in the Oshkosh area school district? Are they moving on to jobs? Are they moving on to school? Right now, it appears that we have a relatively low percentage of individuals graduating that are actually moving on to post-secondary school of any kind. So that's something that we're partnering with the new superintendent, Vicky Cartwright, who now serves in our board, and other folks within the school districts to see if that can be a way to bring that up. Additionally, we rank about the middle of the pack when it comes to median household income. We rank third when it comes to per capita real GDP, the value of our goods and services that we produce and sell. And we also, between 2007, 2017, we ranked first in terms of commercial valuation added among all I-41 corridor communities. I'm going to sift real quickly through this, but when it comes to some things like unemployment rate, we have the third or fourth lowest unemployment rate consistently across the state of Wisconsin. We also have a shrinking number of people who are unemployed, which is a good thing, right? But when you talk to our employers, certainly, that's a shrinking number of people, pool from which to hire. Our monthly employment continues to increase. It's getting closer to six digits, which I don't know if we've ever experienced in the Greater Oshkosh area. And also, another thing I think is very important to note is earnings. And Oshkosh historically has ranked very low when it comes to hourly and weekly earnings, but also ranks very high when it comes to salary wages on an annual basis. So we rank almost dead last when it comes to hourly and weekly wages, and we rank third when it comes to average annual pay. When it comes to sectors, I'm going to have to get my binoculars on to see this slide, but it looks like, if I recall, when it comes to construction wages, we rank very high. When it comes to manufacturing wages, we rank third out of 12. When it comes to information and technology jobs, we rank fourth out of 12 metros. And when it comes to education and health services, I would choose probably to break those out, but this factor doesn't do that. We're ranked last in the state of Wisconsin. So that's just a little bit in terms of benchmarking, in terms of how we look at what we're at versus some of the other metros. But in terms of things that we're doing, the crux of our strategic plan remains business retention and expansion, as I said before, taking care of who we have here in Oshkosh, and helping them add value to what they do. Workforce development, obviously, that's a no-brainer. That falls hand-in-hand with business retention and expansion, entrepreneurial growth, some of the things related to the capital catalyst program, partnering with other entrepreneurial groups like the Small Business Development Center, Generator, and some others, and also targeted industry development. And obviously, a lot of the work that we're doing plays, this week, plays very well into that. A couple of things I think it's very important to mention, actually, I'll wait on that because I'm going to address that as we go along here, but I'm going to get into a few other metrics. Something that did not change from our original strategic plan is relationship building. And we had a target every year of connecting with 150 business CEOs in our community. That has become an easier and easier target to reach. We're at 101 of that 150 goal for this year. I actually had a little, for those of you at the board meeting last week, that was a lower number considerably because we had, we were looking at an older chart than we, not giving ourselves credit for some of the more recent visits that we had made. So it's 101 as of June 2018. We want to take that a step further and plan to by actually quantifying what we find from those visits and issuing a report either on a biannual or an annual basis, that kind of benchmarks and also shows some of the trends and issues in our community from a community-wide perspective, business community. Property searches, I know this is one that has come up a lot in terms of discussions of what properties are being included and how many properties are being included. And we do receive a lead either from New North, Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, a commercial real estate broker, or a direct referral. Of the 31, we've had 31 property searches that we completed between January and June, which I think is an abnormal number, higher than normal. And of those 31, nine were existing companies, 29% of that 31. 21 were business attractions, 68%, and one is a miscellaneous category. Of these 31 property searches, 23 involved existing buildings, and 15 were involved sites, and in some cases, they involve both. We had submitted a total of 183 properties, 89 buildings and 94 sites. 43 of those were city-owned. And of those, probably not surprising to many of you here, those were in the southwest industrial park largely. We had some activity in the northwest industrial park, particularly the Boshwitch, was called the Boshwitch Farm, and also the aviation park. I think we had a couple of leads, companies looking for, aviation-related companies looking for sites. Obviously, the aviation park is kind of a no-brainer on that one. Nine of the 31 property searches came from New North, our regional economic development partner. Talent Takeoff, I've had a couple of different versions of this. One was the spring, we had a STEM-focused job fair at the Menominee Nation Arena where we had a handful of employers that were hiring for higher-skill engineering-type positions. So we had, I think we had, and this is a grant, this is related to the aviation grant that we administered. So we had Oshkosh Corp. and Mercury Marine, we had Gulfstream, which obviously played very well in the aviation theme, and a couple other companies, very well-received. One of those job fairs is very targeted, so you're not going to have 500 people, but you're going to have 50 of the type of candidates that companies want to hire. The second one is the one that we're doing this week, which is Talent Takeoff. So we have roughly 15 companies that have signed up for time at our booth to hire candidates, to talk to candidates, and also, we have a space within our booth that's private where they can also interview candidates if they have a hot candidate they want to talk to. According to Art, if I overheard him right before I went up here, it sounds like one of those companies hired somebody today. So that was a good outcome of having that space. A couple of other things, because this is a mid-year report, we did have a good presence at the in-development conference, which was at Lambeau Field earlier this year, and we had a lot of different things that we were able to showcase as part of that event. Obviously, we're president at the state of the city, and so I think that was a good time to thank you for the award again, and also thank you for your continuing support. We had the, obviously, the Oshkosh Corporation Headquarter for Groundbreaking. So again, thank you again for your support of that project in many different capacities and happy to hear from Jason Havlick a couple of days ago that everything's going real well and on time, and they're very excited that they haven't had any major delays. Oshkosh, our new transload terminal that was opened up, I think, last month, that you guys hosted, and thank you for allowing us to be a part of that special event. It's amazing the kind of buzz that this is generating when it comes to, and I know one of the things that's on your radar is to sell more of the public land that you guys have now purchased for economic development purposes. And I think you're certainly going to accomplish that with the properties around this transload facility over the next number of months. So you can see there an ad that we have purchased or in the process of purchasing in the New North B2B to highlight the presence of that transload facility in Oshkosh as an asset to companies, not just here, but certainly companies from throughout the New North that want to ship out of Oshkosh. I think that's also a very important, understated advantage of having this transload, because we have a lot of folks that will be shipping, coming to Oshkosh for shipping purposes. One of the things that is also in our strategic plan, and I think maybe yours as well, is to look at relationships up and down the I-41 corridor. We've kind of found a good kinship and bond with the economic development folks in Fond du Lac County. And to that end, they actually invited us to, and our manufacturers, to participate in an event called Heavy Hitters Manufacturing, which involved our manufacturers and their manufacturers coming together at a Doc's Fighters game, knowing that we now, both communities have professional sports, so that's something we have in common. They have baseball, we have basketball. So we did the first event, the Doc's Fighters game last month, and then next year, we plan to reserve one of the upper levels at the Menominee Nation Arena for inviting them up to network with our folks as well. We've moved our office downtown, which is a very exciting event for our organization. Our team was ecstatic to be able to move downtown. Our landlords treated us very well over the last several years, but we really felt like we needed to be part of the central city in a bigger way. So very happy, the folks at 100 Block did a great job of accommodating us, renovating our office space, and we have made a lot of improvements to that space as well to kind of serve our needs. And so we look forward, I think tomorrow, actually, during AirVenture, I have a South Africa consulate coming in to visit with us. I originally got the email, I thought it was spam, and thank goodness, I got another email from them to say they want to meet with you this week. So we're very excited to have them join us in our new office here tomorrow. We're not, waiver robotics is not a program that we sponsor or that we have a formal relationship with, but it's a growing relationship we have with them. And I think as we get more involved in some of the positions in our community, skilled labor, STEM-related career options, this program, I think, is under-the-radar program, but is definitely one of the higher-value programs, I think, within the Oshkosh, not just in the Oshkosh area school district, but the Oshkosh community. Their students participate in competitions throughout the world, robotics competitions. They're going to China, I think, for the second or third year to compete. And I'm not going to play those videos, but I do want to link their four-year viewing because they encourage me that whenever I'm out and about to spread the word about their program, because they're a club right now. They have big ambitions, they have interest in creating some kind of a maker space or incubator space, or even expanding this program beyond the 30 students or so that are currently participating in that program. And finally, I'm just going to conclude by showing a video that some of you may have seen, but we did this to introduce the community and also our business community to the team and the different competencies we have in our team. So I'm just going to conclude my part of our presentation and show this video and then open it up to your questions. We have a great team, and, you know, one of the things I learned was that I could do a lot more with teammates than I could by myself. You have to surround yourself with a lot of great people that can do a lot of different things and are very committed to the organization's mission.
I'm Art Rathgen, Director of Strategic Initiatives.
My name is Audra Hoyne, I'm the Director of Business and Economic Development.
My name's Kimberly Lan, and I'm the Research and Communications Manager.
My name is Jason White, and I serve as the President and CEO of the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation.
Our team at Greater Oshkosh is very tight-knit. We all have varying backgrounds, we all have varying degrees of knowledge, passion in different areas, and that's really what sets us apart and has us very complementary as a team.
Being a part of the Greater Oshkosh team is unique because we're such a small organization. We have the ability to work on projects efficiently together and get to see the community grow, change, and evolve.
I think this is one of the best groups of people to work with. Our leader, Jason White, is metrics-oriented, and you'll find that this organization is committed to best practices that will help Winnebago County and Oshkosh, and that's important. I think that's what makes this group distinctive and different. That's what makes us unique, and I think every year, we take our role seriously as far as what we're trying to achieve within the community.
My favorite thing about Oshkosh is the downtown and all the historic buildings that are on South Main Street, North Main Street, Oregon Streets, the history that's behind it. It's very interesting to me, and just to see where the community was back in the day to where it is now, it's just that transformation, that growth that's being experienced is my favorite part.
A lot of things are happening here. It's a great area for kids, it's a great area to raise a family.
What I love about Oshkosh is we're a small community with a big heart. We rally together, we believe in great things, we work hard, and we really want what is best for ourselves and the next generation.
The people are genuine. I love this area of the country. You'll find authentic people here in Wisconsin, and particularly in Oshkosh. I find that they are almost the perfect representative of a Wisconsinite. There are good people here, and that's what makes this a special place to call home.
One of the goals when I came in here was that we will have the best economic development team, and I think that to date, we have been able to accomplish that. So I'm very proud of the fact that we have the right people on the bus, serving in the right capacities, and this team has continued to work together, enjoy the work that they do together, and I think the future is bright as that continuity continues to exist for Greater Oshkosh.
We rally together, we believe in great things, we work hard, and we really want what is best for ourselves and the next generation.
The people are genuine. I love this area of the country. You'll find authentic people here in Wisconsin, and particularly in Oshkosh. I find that they are almost the perfect representative of a Wisconsinite. There are good people here, and that's what makes this a special place to call home.
One of the goals when I came in here was that we will have the best economic development team. And I think that, to date, we have been able to accomplish that. So I'm very proud of the fact that we have the right people on the bus, serving in the right capacities, and this team has continued to work together, enjoy the work that they do together. And I think the future is bright as that continuity continues to exist for Greater Oshkosh. Any questions?
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. White, just a quick question regarding the 183 property searches and what was referred to earlier. Just out of those 183 property searches, how many of those made the decision to pull the trigger and locate here or expand here? Or are they all in progress?
I think many of them are in progress. Do you have any ideas on that, Kimberly? I'll call Kimberly. Kimberly interacts mostly with our commercial real estate brokers.
So there's eight that are still active or still in the pot, as we call them. There's two that are inactive, and then the two ended up selecting Oshkosh. One of them is Envoy Logistics, and the other one, I'm not making a mistake, because they're still quiet.
Thank you.
That's why I said I have a good team. They always have the answers.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. I know it's a busy week for you guys, because obviously, for obvious reasons. So I appreciate you taking time tonight and also to be out, you know, when we have so many prospects that potentially could be here in the Oshkosh area, not only from the U.S., but outside of the U.S. Thank you for coming. You typically come in and present, you know, once, twice a year. We've never had to ask. You guys always come in, you always are transparent. I think the video is great. I think it's a good representation of what Go EDC is about. For some of us on council, you guys have certainly exceeded our expectations of what we envisioned in 2011. And so I do want to also thank you. You guys are very, very visible out in the community. That's something I hear quite frequently. Not only are you visible at a number of events, but also just a first-class organization. I think you represent Oshkosh and the Greater Oshkosh area in a way that I think is really second to none in other communities. So thank you to you and the team. Couldn't be more appreciative of the work that you guys put in.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
With that, Jason, thank you for the update, and Kim, and Audra, and Art, for all your hard work, and enjoy the airshow in the Senate. Thank you again. Next on the agenda, we have a time for citizens to make statements to council. Before I read what we expect, do we have any?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Citizens, to address the council only, statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Pam?
Jackie Steiner, 915 West Fifth Avenue.
Hi, I'm Jackie Steiner. I am resident in the city of Oshkosh. I live on Fifth Street, and I am here in hopes that you're willing to support our park. Still, our park, we're looking for approval for our grant. Any questions? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will move to consent agenda items. These are items of a routine nature, administrative nature, that are voted on by the council on the single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common councilman requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Pam?
No one is registered.
I will bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
Move Consent.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Rosie.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Palmary.
Aye.
Mubrower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda. Next, we have pending ordinances, and there's been a request to layover. We have several items on our agenda relating to the proposed Pickard Estates subdivision. Developer has requested that the pending ordinances and resolutions be laid over to the August 15 council agenda to allow them to complete their financing for this project. There is one new ordinance, 18-399, that will also be scheduled for action on the August 15 meeting. Is there a motion to layover the pending ordinances and resolutions?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to layover ordinances, 18-397 through 18-398, and resolutions 18-400 through 18-405 pertaining to the Pickard Estates subdivision to the 15 August council meeting.
We need a second. Discussion. Mr. Peck.
I was just in for the...
Okay. Let me see, no discussion. Would you please take the roll?
Rosie.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Palmary.
Aye.
Mubrower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
It moves us to new resolutions. The first is Resolution 18-406, approve Phase III of 2017 Great Neighborhoods Capital Improvement Programs, funding an amount of $167,255. Approve Phase I of 2018 Great Neighborhoods Capital Improvement Programs, funding an amount of $55,245. Pam, has anyone registered to speak to this pending resolution?
Yes. We have Kathy Webb, 543 Otter Avenue, and then we have Shirley Robetter Maddox, 1313 Jackson Street.
Hello, I'm Kathy Webb, and I'm here representing our River East neighborhood. And I would request that the council would implement our plan. We have two existing bus shelters that are in the construction area right now on Washington and Court Street, and we'd like to relocate those, one to Court by Court Towers, so our elderly neighbors don't have to just sit on a bench out in the elements. And we'd also like to request, after moving the two existing bus shelters, to have two, maybe a little fancier, bus shelters to be placed on Washington Avenue, that being a historic area, and also on Washington and Court Street. So we're hoping you can implement that plan so we can improve the ridership of our bus system for our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the Historic Jackson Neighborhood Association and a grant for stability, yes, for safety, mobility, and improvement plan for Jackson Street. The part of our neighborhood is 1.2 miles from Murdoch to Church Avenue. There are 19 intersecting streets in that 1.2 miles. There are 151 driveways. Neighborhoods east and west of Jackson are all residential, and people who want to go from east to west must cross Jackson. This is a safety study. Safety is probably the first thing that people in city government are supposed to look after for their citizens. I know DOT, their website, number one, they exist to promote safety. In the last, I've been studying the police blotter reports, and in seven months, there were 75 crashes on Jackson. We have Merrill School, we have the university, and students travel in both ways, walking and biking. We have families that pushing, there are kids in strollers, we have people in electric motor scooters. And it's necessary that the city, us, come up with a plan and get it done professionally of how to maneuver 19 intersections, people traveling every which way, and to make sure that they are safe. The people that walk, bike, live, and drive. So often, we think about the motorist. I had a friend lives on Jackson, and she was rear-ended recently. I mean, most of us that live on Jackson can recall either being hit, I've been into accidents, crashes, or seeing them. Just 2:30 this Friday, last Friday morning, there was a crash outside my house. So it's not part of quality of life. And so I ask that you consider this study. And I have 81 signatures of people that live on Jackson. Some of our families that have lived there 30, 40 years are here tonight. And so if they were all sitting here tonight, they would all say, please, look after the safety of everyone traveling and living in this neighborhood, Jackson neighborhood. Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you.
The petition was handed in. What I will do is scan that and email it to all the council.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who is registered to address this?
No one else is registered for 32.
I will bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Mr. Davis and/or Mr. Roloff. First of all, thank you, neighborhoods, for putting these together. Lot of effort, lot of energy put into coming up with these plans. And you are the models, role models, for other neighborhoods. The question relates more to the financial piece of this, and that is, so it appears that what we're looking at is, we have a playground improvement, which is mentioned that they've identified 2019 capital improvement budget money for this. And then I see we have bus shelters as well as the safety study, which, in my mind, I'm thinking, wouldn't those services ordinarily be included in either our parks budget or our transit, transportation? Why is this filtering through the Great Neighborhoods program? I'm sure they have a long list of other things that they would like to accomplish, too. Wouldn't these be our ordinary operating pieces in our other CIP and operating budgets?
I can answer part of that. I can give you part of the answer. We solicit ideas for projects from all the neighborhoods, and it's really a neighborhood-generated program, so that we want to address those items that are of the foremost importance for each neighborhood. Every neighborhood has an opportunity, and there's more that you'll be seeing for the next round of funding. These happen to be one, projects that met the neighborhood criteria after review by city staff, so that's why we can recommend them at this point. They all relate directly to a neighborhood goal or a neighborhood organization that has that as a goal. When it comes to the other CIP issues, I guess I'd turn that over to Mr. Roloff.
It really comes down to, our CIP budget is very limited, and, for example, playground improvements, we probably can afford one in our regular parks capital improvement program. So this enables the neighborhoods, if they feel that these programs are, these improvements are important enough to their neighborhood that they introduce these, because otherwise they may not get done for several years before they come up the list of capital improvements. Parks Board and the Parks Department categorizes their improvements, and I believe transportation does as well, but Parks Board goes through that process every single year. And sometimes these projects, they just fall down the list, because we generally, four to six, Counselor Herman, would you say? But, so this enables maybe a seventh, a sixth or seventh project to get done when it otherwise might have to wait for a very long time.
Thank you.
Councilman Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to ducktail off what the city manager mentioned. First off, the Jackson Street traffic study, don't forget, when we approved that ordinance change, we talked about that there was going to probably be a study, and they just, for the sure term, was to make that no left turn for accidents. And this study will definitely help improve that corridor. And we've also done some other things. We put the traffic signs up there for pedestrian crossings in that area. But up to the parks side of things, just when we, there's over 17 parks in City Oshkosh. We just approved the new park plan for Rouge Park with no funding at this point. You know, and we got $200,000 this year in the budget for the tennis courts. That's just for one small portion of the Dominion Park with a little Oshkosh still coming ahead of us. So I do think it's important that the citizens that live in these neighborhoods have parks in their neighborhoods, their kids go there, their grandkids go there, that if they feel that this is part of their neighborhood, and they want to use their neighborhood initiative dollars, I think it's a great way to expand our budgets when we have limited dollars, especially in the CIP, because the CIP deals a lot with our infrastructure issues and not always the quality of life issues that sometimes I think the Great Neighborhood Initiatives in HNI work on. So I think that's an important piece. So I'm going to support this. I think it's vastly needed, and it's also a great way of the city working with our neighborhood, neighborhood associations. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Mubrower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to thank the neighborhood associations as well. Having, I think we're up to 16 now.
Yes.
And that is a wonderful thing in this community. It's a great way to get involved in your city, get involved in your neighborhood, and just make your community a better place. So thank you for putting forth that effort. It doesn't go unnoticed. It's definitely having an impact. And really, these are good dollars being spent towards making improvements in neighborhoods that want them and that are actively engaged in trying to make this a better place to live, work, and play. So thank you to all of you.
I see no other councilmember wishing to speak. I do need a motion in a second.
Yep.
I have it.
I have it. Sorry about that. Would you please take a vote?
Rosie.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Palmary.
Aye.
Mubrower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
I do apologize, I overlooked a new ordinance, so we'll have to backtrack a little bit, and that is ordinance 18-399, which is approved closure of Ninth Street Road, in reference to West Ninth Avenue, from Linden Oaks Drive to the proposed Paul's Place.
No one is registered.
No one is registered. I'll bring that back to the council for a motion in a second.
First reading.
I would move, based on staff recommendation, to waive the rules and adopt them.
This actually goes along with the Pickard Estates, so...
We just do first reading. We're good with this.
Okay, first reading. Okay. Good enough.
Okay. We can move on now.
To 18-407.
All right, Resolution 18-407, approve memorandum of understanding for Rock the Block with Habitat for Humanity in Greater Oshkosh, Healthy Neighborhood, Inc. Did anyone sign up to speak to this?
Bill Wyman, 1373 Wagu Ave.
I am the President and CEO of Oshkosh Area Community Foundation. This program is a collaborative effort between three strong organizations, including the city. The Community Foundation always looks for collaborative efforts. Things like this to improve our neighborhoods is, as you just talked about, is terrific. Neighborhoods and housing is one of the community foundations initiatives to address in this community, so I am really excited this is happening. I appreciate the city for getting involved in this, and I'm sure that both Habitat and GOH and I will do a great job. So thank you.
Pam, is there anyone else?
No one else is registered, but if the gentleman would like to speak, he can fill out a form when he's done.
Good evening. Jeff Potts, I live at 163 West Eighteenth Avenue, and I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Oshkosh. My apologies for not registering in advance. My apologies for not registering in advance to speak. I'm just here, obviously, to support this. And just a couple of quick thoughts. Habitat has worked really hard for our thirty years to address affordable housing in Oshkosh. And the way we are approaching our organizational growth is looking at building capacity through engagement. And working with neighborhood associations and the city and Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods Incorporated not only aligns perfectly with our mission, but with our strategic growth as an organization. And so for the city to be our third strong partner in this, I can guarantee you're going to see remarkable change in what we're able to do. Rock the Block is a proven Habitat model that exists all over. It exists in different shapes and forms and feels for what's right for a community. And what we're going to do for the Oshkosh community is strategically look at neighborhoods that want to roll up their shirt sleeves and get engaged with us and help make this a better community. So I'm really here to answer any questions and just thank you for your support.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Mr. Potts. How will those neighborhoods where the Rock the Block be identified? There's some reference in here that there will be leadership between Go HNI and Habitat on this election. And you mentioned strategic. So in some parts, we're referencing the city will, and other parts, we're referencing Go HNI. Who's, how is that playing out?
Sure. Ultimately, it's a Habitat decision on which neighborhood we want to engage. We look at a lot of factors. For the purpose of bringing these three groups together, it was really a granting process that brought us together. And we identified some clear objectives. We wanted to look at raising property values. We wanted to look at increasing engagement of residents. And we wanted to ensure that not only were we looking at helping homeowners, but also landlords and public improvements. When you get down to which neighborhoods specifically we're going to do this work in, I'm flattered that there's great excitement in this community. And that's a real gentle way of saying, everybody wants to make sure that I hear their voice and see that they're raising their hand and going, hey, consider us for this. What I will tell you is that, much like when we select a partner family for our homeownership program, we're changing lives in a really big way, and we have to be very careful with the way we vet who we're going to partner with. That's why Habitat's going to look for a couple of things. One, it's going to be need. We're going to look for neighborhoods that need our help. Quite simply, there are some neighborhoods that may not at this time. Two, we're going to look at the feasibility of actually getting work done. If anybody knows my organization, I have one construction guy, and he is awesome, and he builds me two houses a year. And now I'm asking him to fix a whole neighborhood. Until I can build that internal capacity and until we can develop these partnerships with more staff people and more help to get this done, what we really have to do is manage expectations and say, we can do a certain level of projects, and we will get better at that and more efficient at that. And every year we do another Rock the Block, we will have a bigger impact. At the end of the day, though, we have to strategically select neighborhoods that are viable for the kind of projects we're looking at. And so that we don't get other entities in this community in the line of fire, so to speak. We can't make this a popularity contest or a vote on which neighborhood can have the loudest voice and say, pick me. This really has to be among our three partners deciding, hey, we know with our resources, we can go in and have the largest impact in this geographic area.
And so how would that impact or success be measured? Are we looking at a market analysis, on property values? We've been having those conversations for several years, so what will that look like?
Certainly. It's, it is property values, indeed. We're looking to raise the overall homeowner equity in the area. Donor engagement was the second one. And our third one is really the sheer number of projects we can tackle, whether that's aesthetics improvements to somebody's landscape or a more critical repair. It's literally knowing how many parcels are in there and how many we can touch and engage people. The other component of that, obviously, is volunteers. This is a very generous community, and what we're counting on is that people will go into neighborhoods that aren't their own, and they'll get to meet other people, and they'll feel that sense of social connectedness.
Well, certainly.
Thank you.
I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Pam Ruder. I'm at fifteen thirty-seven Rugby Street. I am the new executive director of Go HNI. And Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods Incorporated is very happy to partner in this collaboration with Habitat and the city of Oshkosh. Neighborhood revitalization is our major mission, and this is just a really excellent way to bring people together, both in that neighborhood, but the entire community. So we're looking forward to the partnership.
Well, thank you. Pam? The other Pam, not you.
No one else is registered.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a couple of comments. First, I support this program. It's awesome that we have this public-private partnership. I want to thank the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation for providing the grant funding for this to get the program off the ground. Like we heard earlier with, you know, Go EDC, public-private partnerships do work in the Oshkosh community, the Oshkosh area. This is just another way of working together, leveraging dollars. At this point, city's only, basically, the involvement is to assist in looking at locations and then down the line, possibly getting involved with some of our other programming that we have for healthy neighborhoods in CDBG dollars. So I think it's a great opportunity to get in and leverage more dollars to affect more places and locations throughout the City of Oshkosh, so I will be supporting this resolution. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm really excited about this. The Rock the Block in other communities has been around quite a while. I should sit here a little more. That Rock the Block through Habitat has been in a number of communities, and we've seen how successful that's been. So it is really exciting to see that come to Oshkosh and the collaboration. So thank you, guys, for pulling this together. Staff for working with you on that, too.
Would you please take a roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugarower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have council discussion, direction of city manager, and future agenda items. The first is the first budget workshop tomorrow, July twenty-fifth, at 5:00 p.m. in room four oh four. Have we determined a stop time for this?
Our goal is seven o'clock, to be done, no later than that time.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have a public works contract workshop on July thirty-first, 5:00 p.m. in room four oh four. And then our second budget workshop is August twenty-second at five o'clock in room four oh four. Will that also be a two-hour session?
All three sessions are goal to be seven o'clock, or when you give us the high sign that you're.
It helps with planning.
Yes.
This is a, according to councilmen, the citizens have a second chance to address the council. Pam, has anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
Okay. Move on to councilmember announcements and statements. The first is Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to give a quick little update on the Rental Housing Advisory Board. As their council liaison, we would like to share that by this fall, the Rental Housing Advisory Board will be bringing forth a more detailed strategic plan. There has been quite a bit of work done on developing some of the educational materials. And a little thing happened along the way called Act Three Seventeen, which changed some of that work. And so some revisions have had to be made. And just some of the highlights for the action plan or the strategic plan is development of some educational materials, tenant bill of rights, rent debatement, social media, some training programs regarding landlord and rent smart, fair housing, these kinds of things, as well as this advisory committee looking at some of our policies and/or code change recommendations. Staff has been very helpful and patient as this new advisory board has come together. And that's what you can look forward to by the end of the year.
Thank you. Next, it's my turn to talk about funds. Fun with Friends event at Menominee Park on August first. This will be a free event, free train rides, free popcorn. Event goes from three to six p.m. on the first. So I invite everyone to come down to Menominee Park. Enjoy a train ride with your children or grandchildren, depending on your age and size. The train might be a little difficult to get in and out of, but it's a fun ride, so weather should be perfect. Most of our events now have very perfect weather as part of the plan. So come on down to Menominee Park on August first. Mr. Roloff, it's your turn for city management announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items that are in your agenda packet, or at least just items of note. The next council meeting will be three weeks and one day from today. We have a fifth Tuesday this month. And then Election Day is Tuesday, August fourteenth, so the council meeting automatically moves to Wednesday. Just a reminder, in addition to Election Day, early voting is now available through the Friday before Election Day. So if you can't or don't anticipate being available on Election Day to vote, you can certainly stop by the city clerk's office and, oh, yes, of course, bring your ID, which is state law now, so please remember to bring that so you can vote. In your packet, there's a memo from Mr. Godey and myself regarding amendment to a professional services agreement, additional stormwater review by Brown and Caldwell, associated with TIP thirty-four and thirty-five, which is essentially all the work with Westfield Extension and Keller Street Extension associated with the Oshkosh Corporation Road Construction. So we've worked on that. I believe Councilor Mugarower brought up earlier, we have a sixteenth neighborhood association, Sawyer Payne Neighborhood Association got started up. Really appreciate the existing neighborhood associations that offer their support to these groups to get going. That really helps give them a good boost. It's great, and I appreciate all the work the staff does. But when they get reassured by fellow residents that, yes, this process is okay, you'll be okay, you won't, you know, you won't fall apart by doing it, really helps, and we appreciate all the work that they do with that. Oshkosh Corporation update, memos in your packet. Moving ahead, foundation work is, I believe, getting started. So real happy to see that as well. And then the first quarter strategic plan update, Courtney Jenks is here, certainly happy to discuss any questions you might have regarding that. This was the, again, this is the first quarter for 2018, just about the progress we're making towards our goals. Although, because we had our retreat on Thursday, we did talk a good deal about it on Thursday. But Mr. Fitzpatrick and Courtney are both coming up. So if you have any questions or just comments related to that, certainly happy to do that. Anything, anybody?
Deputy Mayor Palmary has a question, I believe.
Just real quick on the recognition of the Sawyer Payne Neighborhood Association, just a minor thing here.
Courtney, come on up and answer that. No, easy.
Not for you, Courtney. I just noticed that we are using SPNA as the abbreviation, but I believe Stevens Park already has claimed that one. So the good news is, we have sixteen new neighborhood associations, but just for lack or to avoid confusion.
We get confused with the names. We just reel off a name. It's okay. But S-dash-P-N-A, how's that? I don't know. We'll figure out something, but thank you.
Just a little.
S-P-N-A-D. Very good. Thank you. Any questions regarding the strategic plan update for the first quarter? Otherwise, follow-up, it's really just more of an, if there are any questions or comments from the council following Thursday's strategic planning session, our goal is to bring the plan back to council, I believe in September, for final adoption. What we'll do is we'll take all the feedback that we got from council at the retreat, try to put that into some specific action plans based on the goals that the council set, and then work through that with the department heads and supervisory staff, and then clean it all up and get it back to you in time for September, so that as we're working on the 2019 budget, that the strategic plan is there for you to peruse and have ready to make sure that we're staying true to our strategic plan within our budget.
All right. Thank you.
That's all you have. Thanks.
Now, Deputy Mayor Palmary, would you like to make a motion to go into closed session?
Yes, thank you. I propose a motion to go into closed session. The council may convene into closed session to discuss the mid-year review of the city manager and employee over which the common council has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility pursuant to Section nineteen point eight-five-one-C of the Wisconsin State statutes, and B to discuss development agreement with Fox Valley Pro Basketball, Inc., property located twelve-twelve South Main Street I pursuant to Section nineteen point eight-five-one-G of the Wisconsin State statutes, to confer with legal counsel, who will give legal advice concerning the strategy to be adopted, and two pursuant to Section nineteen point eight-five-one-E to discuss bargaining options, strategy, and parameters where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
You were so quiet in that corner tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, and my colleagues. So just in transparency, wanted to let you know I will be participating in the closed session, A, to discuss the mid-year review of the city manager. However, when it comes to closed session, B, Fox Valley Pro Basketball, Inc. is my employer, and I will not be participating in that closed session, nor any discussion.
Thank you. Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugarower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Again.
Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.